We have roll call, please.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Absinthe. Odinger that. Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Steve Smith. City Attorney Perry Hurst.
You've probably noticed we do have a couple of absences here today. Our city attorney is on a cruise out in the middle of the ocean somewhere, so he's trying to dial in virtually. That's a new one for me. And Alderman Smith is ill today. And I think Luanna Alderman Odinger, Alderwoman, I'm sorry, is awaiting the birth of a grandchild. So we do have a quorum and we can do the business of City of Newport. If you probably have a copy of the minutes in your packet, if you've had a chance to peruse those, so entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Sir.
Have a motion on the board then to approve the minutes as presented has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And may he's like sign likewise. Hearing none, motion carries. Have no proclamations or recognition by me, but do any of you Aldermen or anyone present have any recognition of citizens or anything?
I just want to congratulate Newport Grammar for their great showing.
Congratulations, Tim, Jan. All right, our next item will be communications from our city administrator, Mr. James Fitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few issues this month. First, safety issues on Cope Boulevard. A couple of weeks back, Alderman Ball called me. He had some concerns about the curve on Cope Boulevard where the city and county line meets right at the end of the street where it's a 90-degree turn to the left. There had been some recent accidents there and some of the industry leaders down in the industrial park had contacted him with concerns about accidents happening there. Was there something we could do to make it safer? We have done quite a few things on our side. We put up more reflectorization, more signage. I have requested a street light to go overhead there that will light that up to help make it more visual at night because it's dark all the way down through there. There's currently no streetlights there, so I do have a request in the NU to add a streetlight right at the curve. And we're hoping to get the county to do some things on their side coming in from the other way. But the problems, as I understand it, are mostly on our side where they were coming down going northeast on Cope and then people that were unfamiliar with the lay of the street there, especially in the foggy conditions we've had the last few months, weren't making the curve. They were going too fast to make the curve when they get to it, not realizing that it's a 90-degree curve. And so what had happened on our side, where the accidents had been occurring, they were knocking the signs down, the reflectorization and the warning signs that were there to make you aware that that's a sharp turn. And so when Ben and I went down and investigated it, we found that most of the signs were gone. So we've gotten those back up now. So the sign was there and we've added more signs than what was there to begin with. And we've also requested this street light that we think will help illuminate it and make it easier to spot. But we've had so much fog the last few months, and I know everybody's aware of it, but people that just aren't familiar with that road, it's easy to run up on that too fast and then it's all over. There's nothing you can do but go off that bank there. So we, one thing that would really help, but it's not, the land is not in the city where it needs to go, but it'd be really good if the county would put a guardrail in there. And that way it could help keep people from letting's going off that bank. But where the guardrail needs to go is not in the city, so we can't, I can't put one there because it's not inside the city, so I can't put a guardrail up. But I'm hoping maybe we can get the county to do that.
I did talk to Bullitt and he said that they would take care of their side.
Right. I went down there today and there hadn't been anything done on that side yet, just to check it out because I was going to make my report tonight. And I didn't see anything on their side yet, but they may, you know, not been able to get to it as quickly as we were.
Right.
But we'll keep an eye on it. And I do think that the major problem is on our side. I don't think people are getting that fast coming the other way because it's a shorter stretch. But down that long stretch by the sewage treatment plant is where they get to going and then they, all of a sudden, they're there at that curve and, you know, which if they'd go the speed limit, they'd probably be all right, but not everybody tends to do that. Speaking of weather, you know, we've had a lot of windstorms recently. During one storm, there was some damage to the traffic light at Lowe's and it became inoperational. And so we had to do an emergency work order to get that fixed. And I just need to get that into the record. I know y'all, y'all are aware we have to do stuff like that all the time and y'all are always good with it and I appreciate that. But, you know, to satisfy the auditors, I always bring it up in here to get it in the record. So we had Progressive come and work on it and they were able to fix it and get it back running pretty quick. So during this routine business, we got a request for a streetlight in an alleyway over in Clifton Heights. And Ben brought it to my attention and we went over to look at it. And, you know, I've worked with the city for over 40 years, but I had never been on that alley. It was a new and old mate. I did not know it was there. And so I was going to write a letter to NU to request a streetlight in there because it is really dark. Ben went and checked it out at night. And there's one, like one streetlight at one end. And so I was going to request one to go in there, so we were going to get the name of the alley because I have to give an address to where to put it. Well, what we discovered was it's an unnamed alley. It has no name. And so I just want to make you aware that we need to name that alley. And so I'm open to suggestions and I thought we might, you know, talk about it between now and next month and then in March, I'll try to have it on the agenda to name that alley. But that's the first one. Now, there's lots of unopened alleys that don't have names, but this one's paved. I mean, it's in excellent condition. The garbage truck runs on it, so it needs to have a name. And somehow that's fell through the cracks. But just to make y'all aware of it, it runs between Walnut and Clifton Heights. It cuts right in front of where Jim Robinson used to live and then comes out over on the other side. It's a pretty long alleyway. And so it's something we've got to do. I know all y'all are aware of the situation we got into a couple of months ago with the guy that we got into a shootout with over in Northport. And then we had the manhunt all day and he was again in the fog and we chased him all day long and they finally got him late in the evening up on the east end up there. Well, at the beginning of that incident was the gunfight that took place over in front of Rocky Top Graphics. And so the building was hit 12 times in the battle and sustained moderate damage, especially to the windows in the front. And so, and also some of the stuff on the inside, particularly a new sign for Bridgeport School. But anyway, we turned it into the insurance and that has been denied, so we're going to have to pay for it ourselves. The insurance, which I found odd, but the insurance said that they do not cover stray bullets. Now, you can take a weed eater and sling a rock and break a window and they'll fix it, but a stray bullet goes through a window, they won't fix it.
Crazy.
I was surprised by that, but I don't know if there's anything you can do about it. But we're going to have to pay for that. I've not got a estimate on it yet, but I want to make y'all aware that that has happened. We are going to have to pay for the damage. And I know he had talked to me about it a couple of weeks ago, Jeff had, and said he was really worried because the big trucks run with bile with our causing the cracks to spread in his window and he's afraid it's going to shatter out on him anytime. So let's see. Gary, did you ever get anything back from him on an estimate or anything?
Not yet.
Okay.
He's been asking for it when he committed.
Yeah. So we will have to fix that. Some of you may know or may not know, but we recently were informed that a benefactor had dequeathed the city and the county money in their will to build an animal control shelter. And so I can now, we have received official documentation on it. So now I can say for a fact that a lady by the name of Kathleen Ann Mulvey left around $2 million to the city and the county to build an animal control shelter. It's 25% of her estate to each entity, which is estimated to be around $4 million. And attorney Jeff Green, who's handling the estate, said that his belief it'll be just over $4 million. But he said it'll be at least $4 million, the estate will, which means the city will get a million and the county will get a million. And that will be prorated out from a trust at $100,000 a year for each entity over 10 years. So that, you know, that's great news for the city and the county because we are right now getting ready to try to build a facility. And so it's the first time that I'm aware of, that I can recollect that anybody leaving the city, anything like that to want to assist in the establishment of something. And obviously I think we should, when we build this facility, we should put her name on it.
Makes sense.
I think that would be only, you know, the right thing to do. And so we're very appreciative of this. She was an advocate for animals, is what I've been told. I didn't know the lady, but I've tried to learn a little bit about her. And she was a great advocate of animals. She was an attorney. They relocated here and lived here for several years and did a lot of work for animal causes. And so she wanted that to be her legacy and, or at least one of them. And so she did that for the city and the county to have a place to take care of the animals. And that's special. That's something really special that you don't see very often. When you look at a lot of the things that have happened around us, the Walter State Facility in Sevierville, the big playground over in Marsh Town, the new campus for Walter State over in Greenville, all those were done by benefactors. And that shows you what a difference that a benefactor can make. And I've made the comment many times over the years that we've never had a benefactor. And so now we have. And hopefully we can do something, build a nice animal control shelter that everybody can be proud of and thanks to her. And I think it's a great thing and we're very appreciative of it. And I wish I knew somebody we could send a thank you card to, but evidently she didn't have any family. So, but I think naming the building in her honor, I think, would be a great tribute to her for what she's done for us and for the city and the county.
James, did she live in that area?
I think she did for a while and then somebody said she moved over in the golf course. I think she lived next to Jeremy over there.
She lived in the area for the bulk of her, just about the last four years.
In Punkton?
Yes.
I remember her house. I know who you're talking about.
And then she moved out to the golf course, the golf of five, golf of five.
If I'm not mistaken, she was a DCS attorney.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I didn't know we're owing the claim with her.
Well, I only met her one time.
She was guardian of attorney, she was several guardian of attorney.
Yes, okay. Wow.
Okay, last thing that I have, I'm going to call on Chief, Fire Chief Shelton to come forward and share some information with you on grants.
So the fire department's been pretty fortunate here in the last few months for grants. We had Chief Reagan had started this out with the fire adaptive communities programs with the Tennessee Department of Forestry and they've worked together. We've received a $20,000 grant that we're able to use to get equipment, PPE, and then do some education, some public education and things with that. And that totals, it totals $20,000. Also, Gary, is it the, make sure I said it, CDG grant?
It's what? C D D G.
C D. See, I always say CBD, that's why. Whatever Gary thinks. Community block grant, so that's what we got. So that was for the, that was put in for a Swift Water grant and we were awarded that grant as well, which the total amount of that's going to be $206,000. And I think $16,000 is the city's part of that. So that's going to allow us to get a vehicle to pull boats. We're going to be able to get an inflatable rigid boat, an aluminum boat. We're going to be able to get tons of, tons of equipment that we don't have. We'll be able to get dry suits, ropes, some other things, so we'll have a pretty good technical rescue. Our guys have been working for the last two years to get certified. So we've got Swift Water and Technical Rescue certified firefighters now, so. And like I say, this is $16,000 our part and the total's $206,000 on that, so very fortunate on that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jimmy. That's all I got.
Thanks, James.
Can you ask Terry to see if he's online?
Terry, are you online?
We've lost Terry.
It was popping and cracking. Mayor and I could hear it, but I don't.
He was there, but we lost him.
I don't blame him. If I was on a cruise, I wouldn't be there either.
No, I wouldn't even try.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees, of which there aren't any tonight, reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Does anyone have anything to add? Gary, you have anything?
No, sir, nothing to report.
Okay. Any Aldermen? No? Okay. And old business, unfinished business, which we have none at the moment, we'll move on to new business. And item A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2023-01, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
This is the first budget amendment that we're doing this fiscal year. I believe these items are just mostly to bring us in line. This year's had a lot of different cost increases across the board and in different areas. We've had a problem with things that are being ordered and that have been ordered and did not come in in prior year and they did not come in this year. So we've got some rollovers and special in the caption.
Okay.
Mayor, if you'd like to make sense, since Terry's not here, would you like for me to read the caption?
Read the caption into record, yes, please.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 2023-01, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2022-2023.
He's back.
Sounds like he's back. If I can figure out how to answer his phone. Mr. Hurst. Mr. Hurst, are you there? I believe he's lost cause.
Okay.
I pushed the right button. Motion to approve ordinance 2023-01, sir.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve ordinance 2023-01, budget amendment for the city of Newport. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the board that's been properly seconded. Please, well, we need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion carries.
Item B is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2023-02, amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title IV Personnel Policy, Chapter and Miscellaneous Policies, Adding Section 4-818 Occupational Safety and Health Program Plan.
Mayor, this is a recommendation that came from OSHA to TOSHA to all the cities and counties in the state requesting that we update our policies to follow this recommendation of theirs to stay in line with the current laws and regulations. And so I'll read the caption. Ordinance number 2023-02, an ordinance amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title IV Personnel Policy, Chapter 8, Miscellaneous Policies, Adding Section 4-818 Occupational Safety and Health Program Plan.
Heard the presentation, quest the board's pleasure.
Motion to put it in play.
Second. Okay. All right, we have a motion on the board then to approve a consideration of reading of ordinance number 2023-02, amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title IV Personnel Policy, Chapter 8, Miscellaneous Policies, Adding Section 4-818 Occupational Safety and Health Program Plan. It has been properly seconded. We will need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item C, discussion of storm drainage study at Indian Hills.
Before I do this, I have some information that's just over an hour old that I would like to announce. We put in a pre-application for an ARC grant for a streetscape project totaling, well, not total a million, it would be a million from them and our match would be on top of that. But I found out that we were invited to apply for the full thing, which basically means you're going to get it, but, and all the heavy lifting got done in the early preliminary stages, but now we officially apply for it and we should be in line for a million dollar grant. The idea is to, when we've got the private rehab going on on Woodlawn, of course, once we leave animal control off of there, getting our own property, then the clock starts on East Tennessee LLC's building rehab projects. And then, of course, Main Street's going, the Main Street buildings, which are owned by Ms. Wu, she's using Opportunities Own Credit, so she's going to be on the clock too. So we'd like to just rip up that street one time for 18 months instead of doing it twice, but we're going to take, you know, the idea is to take one of the roughest streets in downtown Newport and turn it into a showcase of what you see in Waynesville or Marion or these places that have these cool streetscape downtown, street trees that redo the sidewalks, try and get the utilities underground, so just picture perfect kind of deal. So, yeah, that's a big one. I was excited to get that. Well, we get it, but you have to apply for it. But, all right, now we talk about storm drainage, I guess. This, Alderman Ball asked me about the issues that we have in Indian Hills. If you're not familiar, if you don't live up there, never driven through it, paid attention, the storm water that starts at the base of English Mountain basically cuts a channel through that neighborhood. And in 2020, we did a stormwater study to, basically it's one of those things where you can look at and kind of tell, but if you're going to do, if you're going to apply for grant funding, you want an engineer stamp on it or if you want to make sure you're doing it right, because if you do, if you do what the engineer says and it goes wrong, they're liable, but if you just guess and get it wrong, then it's you. So we commissioned this, but then kind of shelved it because I think back then, 2020 was weird and we were being very careful about how we spent our money. So, but I think that, you know, Alderman Ball, Alderman Smith were here, he'd agree that they're, it's an issue and it's a lot of private property, but you can't really ask people to go and repair their private property if it's just going to get, you know, tunneled back out by the water. So you've got the report there, 16 pages. I won't go into detail, but they kind of lay out what I thought. The water starts up there, it goes under Cosby Highway, behind the state garage, under the interstate, under Heritage, and then just picks up speed going through that neighborhood, so much so that Maurice loses most of his yard on a good rainy day. And so the last page is the one that hurts the worst and that's why they put it at the end because they estimate, to do everything they're saying, they're like $2.16 million, but they give you several recommendations. So, and for my dollar, I would think if we did want to dedicate some time and money to this, that we start with the upstream storm mitigation and just see what that does, is if that slows it down enough that we wouldn't have to keep going because it's, where it's all mostly on private property, you're looking at either getting easement all the way through there or to some parts of it, so you can work on it, or purchasing pieces, bits of property here and there so you can build something to catch the water, slow it down, so it just doesn't have that force when it goes through the neighborhood. And then maybe people will be comfortable, our private citizens will be more comfortable about putting money into the repair of their personal property.
Is this the same site we visited a couple of years ago?
Yes.
And that's the Walmart, Water, Lowe's.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And now the car wash.
Right. And I mean, like, and we've got a lot of good development going on. There's some stuff that's going to come out here in the next couple of weeks. It's really going to get people excited. And the growth up that corridor, up toward Wilton Springs on Cosby Highway is kind of inevitable, if you ask me. So looking at something that addresses this isn't a waste of money. It's a good use of our funds, especially if we can fix the problem. So I'm not asking for a vote, I'm just, I guess I'm just asking for, I guess, guidance. And I know, you know, Steve's biased, but he told me already that he would be interested in looking at, trying to do, and we've got other issues with storm water. I know Richland Park could use one of these and some recommendations. There's spots up in Clifton Heights that look like they might need to be addressed in the future. So this isn't by any stretch of the imagination the only problem, but it's probably our worst one, so if we're going to start addressing stormwater issues from, you know, in the future, that now, this would be a good one to start with. But I guess what I'm just asking is, is the board going to ask me any questions? Is there any concern as to why we shouldn't start doing this? And if there is, I'll back off. But if the board is interested in doing this and when I start having budget meetings with Tina and James here in the next couple of weeks, we'll discuss putting money in for some component of trying to address these issues.
Is there grants out there that?
Some, not many, that, of course, it's, yes, yes, I don't know. I haven't been successful, anything I've looked at, I haven't been successful with this, with that. It's not, because most of what I'm not good at, what I'm more comfortable with and what I do the most is the economic development stuff and it's hard to prove an economic impact. I mean, even though there is one, there's private property owners losing their drive, their yards eroding away. But a lot of the stuff that I'm, that's in my wheelhouse has proven that if we do that, like down, the one we did downtown, the stormwater project downtown, basically gives you opportunity for commercial growth, which adds to the tax base, and that's kind of what they want to see when you fill those out. But, I mean, of course, anything I'm doing, I'm looking for ways to supplement our local taxpayer dollars with state and federal money, so that it eases the burden.
When would it start?
It could be July 1, depending on what we want to do, if it's something we want to pursue. I know two chunks of property that we should look at purchasing to build something to try and solve, and it's, and it recommended in the report too, so it's not just me guessing at it, but, yeah, we could start July 1, once the money's in the budget.
Large solutions, will they be doing the actual work?
They don't have to, they just did the study, we can hire our own, yeah, whoever we choose.
So the holeless water falls on us, but if a merchant builds something on a great big parking lot that won't hold water anymore, it won't drain, they don't have any responsibility prior to them building?
Prior to them building, they have to meet our stormwater standards in their planning. And Walmart, well, I can't speak to it, it was all built before I got here, but allegedly, supposedly Walmart, Lowe's, everything that's been built up until this point.
Well, I'm not putting that at Walmart.
Oh, sure.
Just saying if somebody else is going to build, do they not have to look forward to?
They do.
They're not going to throw a lot of water on the city of Newport.
Yeah, depending on the amount of square footage they're taking away from the top soil being pushed back for asphalt, concrete, metal structures, whatever, they have to, whatever that displacement formula is, I don't know it, but they have to be able to control and hold and not overwhelm the storm sewer system.
They have to build those retention ponds that slows it down. They still put the water into the water table, but that slows it, like Gary said, that holds it and then it lets it go out slow instead of just in a flood. So, yeah, they do have to mitigate it, but the water still goes into the system, it just slows it down.
What's the car wash, what's the impact of the car wash being?
Minimal, because they're building on top of existing asphalt. And there's, no, no, and there's existing stormwater infrastructure from the Ryans or whatever it was.
Does the, is car wash, is this considered gray water and can go into the storm drain instead of the?
No, they have to have, they, a lot of theirs, that stuff has to go storm sewer, into the sanitary sewer, and then, yeah.
Because I thought, you know, I wondered if that would be, because so technically it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be sending any of their water.
No, not, yeah, nothing they're using, but I mean, you know, anything, they're adding structures, that's true, but everything they're building on previously had asphalt on it, so by that metric, it shouldn't affect how much water goes more, it shouldn't put more water into the storm sewer system than previous, but they still have to show all that on their plans.
Do we currently have ordinance controls on businesses for that?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, the, our zoning ordinance specifies what they have to show, like, what, they have to show their stormwater control and how much it has to be per square foot and all that nerd planner stuff.
So the water from the car wash won't even be in that ditch, is that what you're saying?
There won't be any new water, that, yeah.
Okay. But that would be more.
But if you went, yeah, but if you went up on a couple of feet down and built where there's just grass, then, yeah, you're looking at more water. But if you paved and put up a, I don't know, what's everybody want, a PALS? You put up a PALS and all that water dripping off of the hot dog and the fries or whatever, has to be caught somewhere and slowed down before it goes into the existing.
So actually with the car wash, it might be a good thing, because the water that, in the low places in the ditch stand there for sometimes weeks at a time, and you have a mosquito situation then when the water stagnates, so that could be good water coming about all the time. Is that right?
Yes.
Well, that would be a plus to have a little moving water in the ditch.
Yes.
Sports pleasure, well, we don't, we're not.
Yeah, there's nothing, but I guess tell me if you don't want me to do it.
I would say go ahead and pursue it and come up with some kind of, I would prefer some type of recommendation, we should maybe look at this right now.
Yeah. And then, and then basically, you're, the way to say no to it would be when it, if it was in the budget and you thought it was just too much money, either ask for that part to be removed, or?
Right, I think, well, you know, based on the expense, we would have to do it piecemeal.
Do it in phases.
We couldn't just go, just do it.
I feel.
We'd have to try to do the, what would make the biggest impact first, and then go from there, and try to do phasing in over maybe three to five years. It'd be, it'd be a awful big hit for us to try to do it all at once.
Right. I'm thinking we can do, if we can come up with our own phase one, phase two, and I think, I think that'll show a big difference if we can, there's two spots I'm thinking of that I think we address first, and then I think that makes a big difference.
And something should be better than nothing.
Yes, sir. Absolutely right.
We've got, you know, you have to keep in mind, we have a lot of needs, and by now, just like with this animal control building, we're getting ready to start building on that, and we've, we've already been looking at the expanding Station 2 Fire Station, and what we had budgeted for it, thanks to these crazy inflation numbers now, it's like quadrupled on what we had estimated it would cost. And that's not even, like I say, getting into this animal control shelter building. Based on what the, and all we're looking at doing, Station 2 is building another bay, which is just an open structure, there's not a lot of detail to it, it's just a metal shell with a concrete floor and a little bit of electrical and plumbing in it. And, you know, there, every estimate we've gotten so far has been almost a half a million dollars. And that's way beyond where we thought it might be, we were figuring on about 20% of that. And I hate to say what this animal control building is going to be. Of course, we've got this, you know, this trust money, but that's going to be phased in over 10 years, so we'll have to build it and then pay ourselves back out of the trust as it comes in every year. So there's two projects right off the top of my head that we've got that are not going to be cheap, and, you know, and I'm not trying to downplay, the storm drain is absolutely needed, but I just, I wanted just to show you, just two things off the top of my head that we've got that we're going to have to do, that are not going to be cheap. So the storm, the stormwater issue definitely needs to be addressed, but we'll have to, we'll have to do it in phases, there's no way we can do it all at once. Now that borrowing money, and I really don't want to, I am dedicated to not borrowing any money.
I will say too, Gary, we talked, Alderman Ball asked about grants, at the Development District Board meeting this afternoon that I'm in Knoxville, they, there was a representative there from TBA, from the state, I'm sorry, and they gave a presentation about what money that might be available to address storm drain issues. I didn't want to say anything too much, because I don't have any details, but I can follow up with this guy and see what, see what is available, and see if our project does meet him.
Yeah, if there's a program that addresses residential more than commercial, then I'll chase, I'll chase anybody's dollar if they're wanting to give it to us for something, so.
I'll follow up with them and see what, see what it's all about, if it's possible.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Item D is, after consideration of certificate of compliance for Lex wine and spirits, but I've been told that she will not be here because of illness.
Yes, they have requested that this be postponed until the March meeting.
Right. So item E is consideration of sale agreement of riverfront lots.
If you guys recall, a couple of months ago, Aaron and Scott with Daybreak Holdings came in and had a proof of concept for what Ms. Wu was interested in doing on the riverfront. You've got the purchase agreement there, but I'm actually, because there were a couple of meetings that didn't happen between Friday and right now, that I needed some different information on, not necessarily with the sale, we know what she's going to do, it's well worth our, the exchange for us to sell that property to her, but, and Aaron and Scott aren't here, and I don't know if that's a thing, but I'm just going to recommend either table it, I think Terry usually recommends just to vote, deny it, and then, but I think we do need to sell it to her, but just, I want another month to get some more information on some things between Aaron and Daybreak about the situation. So that'd be my recommendation, but if it's board's pleasure.
We could just postpone it like we are, like we did with the previous item, we can just postpone it for the March meeting.
Good with that, thank you.
All right, number 10, bids, purchases, and expenses. Item A is consideration of bids for turnout gear for the Newport Fire Department.
Yep, the turnout gear is pretty expensive, it's about $3,000 apiece, so we've kind of had been staggering the purchase a little bit, so we don't spread out, to replace everybody would be $75,000 to $80,000. So we kind of broke it down, trying to just get a few sets at a time as they kind of expired. And another problem that we're having is, we, the last set that we purchased, we waited nearly a year for, so there's really like a 10-year lifespan when we're supposed to be replacing the turnout gear. We've switched companies, it's supposed to have a five-month turnaround time, but that's what we're doing, we have one new firefighter that we're getting turnout gear for, and then we're going to replace some gear that's going to be outdated in the next year, so.
Do you have, did you have information?
The amount is $12,087.40 is what it is. This, we put it in the budget for this already. It's a, he has a state bid through a Sourcewell contract, so it's one we don't, we won't have to get bids or anything on.
Okay. All right, heard the presentation, what is board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve purchase of turnout gear in the amount of It has been properly seconded. We do need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
And item B is consideration of bids for Hearst extrication equipment for the Newport Fire Department.
Yes, and, you know, we have the new truck that we're still waiting on to come in, and this is equipment that's going to go onto that. The Hearst equipment, the tools are what we have on our other trucks, so we tried to stay that way, so everything will be interchangeable, our batteries and things like that will work. When I first looked at this, it was $1,500 cheaper, and then when I got here to get it, it's jumped up. We did put this in our budget, I think this one is a few thousand dollars over, just a couple of thousand over. I think we budgeted 30, and this is $32,906 for this equipment, but the mini pumper that we're getting, that we're planning on running a little bit more to save some of the bigger trucks, is that's what this equipment's going to go on.
Tina, do we need a budget amendment to approve this?
I think that we had some dollars that you were going to switch around.
Yeah.
If you're agreeable, then we can just add two, and that way you don't have to develop front visibility.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, we do have a motion on the board then to approve consideration to purchase Hearst extrication equipment, Jaws of Life, for $32,906. It has been properly seconded. Please, well, we do need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
And item 11 on the agenda is comments from citizens, and what I have on the, on the agenda is Ms. Sharon Manning.
Didn't get these two out earlier. And thank you very much for allowing me to talk to you. What I'm here to talk to you about is a piece of property on Graham Street that, and all my notes are in there, and the petition is in there, and then there's a picture of another location that this company has. It's a location on Graham Street that belongs to the Church of God of Newport, right there off the Al Knoxville Highway. We became aware of this on the 26th of January. My son had gone down to talk to the minister there at the Church of God about possibly purchasing some property that they had, and during the conversation, at the end of the conversation, they said, well, even though we're not going to sell this property to you, we feel like we should sort of let you know what we're going to do with it. And that's when they told him they intended to put a halfway house in this house for 12 drug addicted, excuse me, drug addicted males, adult males. There's also a demographic sheet in there for you all, that is strictly the people that live in about a 250-yard distance from this house. It was put together by myself and Jan Snead, and we have about 50 signatures, of which nobody wanted. The reason that I really do not want it in my neighborhood, and I've talked to James, and I know he's talked to several of you all, I feel like, number one, it's a residential zoned place, okay? It is not zoned for a facility, business facility, and 12 drug addicted males do not qualify as a family unit. I believe in what the Church of God is trying to do. If anybody needs it, needs a location like this, Cock County does, it just doesn't need to be in a residential area. We have lots of locations where there are large vacant buildings to where they could rehab those. I don't want it in my neighborhood. I have senior citizens, I have single females, I have single parents, I have handicapped as well as chronically ill patients, and I have couples that live there. That's where my business is. I can look out the front door of my office and see this house. I don't want a 10-foot fence up around it with barbed wire that I have to look at every morning and every night when I leave. This same company, which is T and J Cap, and forgive me, I don't know exactly, it's on the notes here as to what that stands for, but it's a step program for drug addiction. And they come out of the jail, and they go to stage one, and stage two, and stage three, and they graduate. I have no idea what step this house is going to be, or was intended to be, but everybody that I talked to in city government didn't seem to know anything about it, which tells me that not only did they not consult people in our neighborhood, they did not consult the powers that be about, you know, sliding this in under the radar. They have also put one in up behind CVS on Prospect Avenue, which is Prospect Avenue, which is what was the former Head Start building.
Okay.
I have been there, by there, a minimum of 15 times in the last three weeks. I've been there anywhere from 6:00 in the morning till 11:30 at night. I've never caught a security officer, or a police officer, or anybody on that site. The gates are constantly open, and it's, at times you would think you were going to Walmart. That's what the traffic is off and on that parking lot. I don't want that. Like I said, if it's going to be a halfway house, then we need to treat it as a halfway house, and they need to have some rules and regulations. And we don't need to be soliciting every church in the neighborhood or in the community to supply sweat suits and socks and come cook for our men. Give them something they can learn to do for themselves. Teach them to cook. Put them, you know, down on the industrial park road. There's plenty of places down there that are empty. Then set off, put them a garden, and buy them a horse and a cow and a pig, and teach them how to cook for themselves, you know? I'm sorry. You all would not want this in your neighborhood either. And I'm begging you all to please put a stop to this.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Manning. I, this is my first time hearing about this one. I am aware of the one on Prospect or on Mulberry, that leading up to Prospect. But anyway, there has been some discussion about that one, is with some of our city officials. James, do you have anything to add?
That's the picture that I have included.
Yeah, the picture is there.
It's at 11:14 this past Saturday night, that the gate was standing light open. On our return trip from Murfreesboro, I'd left the Newport Grammar School and was on the way home. And that picture I took was at 11:14, and I showed the timestamp on my phone. It didn't print it. But I printed you these two pictures that I took, the gate standing light open.
Okay. We've looked into this since we became aware of it. As Ms. Manning said, we, until it was brought to the attention of Ms. Audinger, we, and she called me about it, that was the first I had heard about it. And so we immediately started looking into it. I went straight out and looked at the property when it was brought to my attention, and got with Gary, and she's exactly right. You know, that's a residential area. You cannot have this in a residential area. And so I met last week with a representative of the church, Joe Embry, who is on the, their committee. He's the chair of the committee that was doing this project, and informed him of the situation. And he said that they would halt construction of a facility, but they were going to continue to rehab the property to be just a single-family dwelling, so that if somebody had their home to burn, or some other situation that happened where they became homeless and needed temporary housing, they could put a family in there till they got their house fixed, or found a place to go, or something like that, which I think would be a good, a good thing to do if they can, if they can do that. And so, but we will, I mean, I don't want to say that we, we don't take their word for it, but we will continue to monitor it just to make sure. But we have made them aware that, that that cannot be done in a residential area. The group, and it also, through this process, brought to our attention the, the place behind CVS. You know, the mayor had asked me, Alderman Hansel had asked me, you know, I've had multiple people to ask me what was going on over there, because you could see all kinds of activity. But we, we didn't know what was going on, and I mean, all we could do is go over and knock on the door and say, hey, what's going on here? But we hadn't done that. And so, but as soon as we found out that that's what was going on, now that is in a commercial district. That is not in a residential district. And when I met with Mr. Embry, he brought that up about what about that facility? And, and I explained the same thing to him. It's, it's two totally different things. It's apples and oranges. The one that they're looking at is in a residential area. This one's in a commercial district. It is allowed in a commercial district, but within guidelines. We, we got to check and see if they meet the guidelines. But one thing we know they did not do, and I, and I'm going to say that it's my belief it was intentional, because they had contacted Gary multiple times, running locations by him, wanting to know, could they have a facility at this location? And almost all of them were residential, and he had told them, no, 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 no. So finally, I think they just quit calling because they didn't want to hear no, and they went ahead and did it. And the one thing that they have absolutely not done is get a certificate of occupancy. And so I've already instructed that I wanted that checked out, and they have to sprinkle, anything that's used for this type of facility must be sprinkled. And when I told Joe that, he said that they probably couldn't have afforded to sprinkle that house, even if they had wanted to move forward with it. So I don't know about the property up there. I don't know, do we know, did they buy it, are they leasing it? Do we have a clue on that?
It's still in the, as far as the property viewer is concerned, it's still in the name of the previous owner. I assumed he was, he was interested in selling it, because that property had come up in the discussions with the JCAP people before. And then when I assumed that they had moved on from that, because I told them, even there, I had, I could argue that it wasn't allowed there. It got silent, they went radio silent, and then someone noticed they were moving things out. And I just thought, okay, well, Mr. Isseran has sold the property. And I haven't, I, I didn't realize until, you know, all this happened that they had actually snuck and done it anyway, because they, the first building for that has never been filed for other location.
They also have a third location, but it is not within the city limits. It's the former Scott McClure home that nobody knew until the 26th. The day before, on the 25th, people did not know what was in there, and it's been there almost a year. And Dan Williams told someone that day that they had a facility in Scott's old home place. And I know that's not within your all's jurisdiction, but I don't think it meets all those codes either.
No, that's a state requirement. That wouldn't, they don't, I mean, it wouldn't be anything we could deal with.
It wouldn't be anything y'all could do.
But, but the state could.
Is it near the school in Carson Springs? Is it near the school in Carson Springs?
No. It's down Splashaway Road. You cut down there off of...
Oh, okay.
Cave Church Road down in there.
Okay.
U.K. Church, Splashaway, originally. Pardon? U.K. Church Road and off of Splashaway.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a McClure that used to live on Cleverter Cut on front there.
That's probably what it is.
That's, I think that was Scott's brother.
Scott's brother, Scotty's dad.
Oh, for, yeah.
But I, I think we have resolved her problem, because we have informed them that they can't, they can't do it there. And they, they seemed amicable about it. They did, like I say, question the other one up behind CVS, and, and so we're, we're going to have to deal with them too. But I think it's resolved.
Have we formally notified them via letter or whatever that they?
No, I just told them, he, just, they were in my office, and I sat and told them, just face to face in my office. There wasn't any, there wasn't any documentation on it.
Chief Sheldon's also asked the state, yeah, because I wrote they were, the state is supposed to be in contact with them, I told them they were supposed to, it had been, it had been followed. And they were notified by us that they hadn't contacted the state, so.
I truly believe in what they're trying to do, you know? I really do. And I, I think we need it. I just appreciate y'all keeping an eye on the fact that they're going in in the city limits in residential areas.
We appreciate your concern and bringing it to our attention, but it looks like we're maybe one step ahead anyway toward rectifying that situation. So thanks for coming in.
Thank you. And thank you.
Yes, that's what we're here for.
Appreciate y'all's...
Without, you know, without citizens giving us some info, we don't always know what's going on. And without somebody bringing that situation to our attention, we did not know about it. And so by bringing it to our attention, we were able to deal with it and to stop it, instead of trying to remove it once it got established, which is, is harder to do. It's easier to stop something, as Barney says, nip it in the bud, than it is just like the one now that's behind CVS. That one's going to be a little tougher deal because it's already established and been there for some time. But it's not going to change the fact. They're going to have to meet the requirements, but it's, it's going to be a little, a more tedious task.
Well, I might get through my taxes is garbage pickup and then talk to you all sometime.
You're always welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
If there's no other comments from citizens, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to say on behalf of our family, we appreciate the calls and concern and prayer and all. When Mom died a couple of weeks ago, we really do appreciate that. And, you know, she worked here a little while. She worked a lot of places, and was here for a long time, and we do appreciate it.
You have comments? You're in none? We entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
We are adjourned.